We're gonna move on to discussion items. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Van De Jack.
Firstly, our first discussion item tonight is to go over the PBS lessons that we have talked to the board about. Quite a while ago, our DAC committee's been working hard over the past several years under the direction and leadership of Mrs. Thomas. And we're in a spot where now we'd like to share with the board some lessons that are prepared for our students. We're gonna take them with the board as fast as we can. Right now, we have grades K through four that we'd like to share with the board. And I will turn over to Mrs. Thomas. This won't take too long, I'll just be honest with you, because a lot of these K through four lessons are pretty straightforward. There could be some discussion items that deal a little bit, we have a little bit more discussion as we get a little bit deeper into the grade levels. A lot of that depends on that DAC conversation. So, the conversation that took place in our DAC helps streamline and clean up a couple of the lessons here before they come to you. So, I will tell you, I'm stealing some of your thoughts there, Mrs. Thomas, but that all of these lessons we vote on with our DAC committee. I'll let Mandy talk a little bit about how it turned out and where we are today. So, please, Tom.
So, each, these lessons, I should say, are rooted in trying to address our problem of practice data, which we've been trying to get through throughout the committee process, as well as what was gonna ground some of the action steps moving forward. And so, what you'll, what you'll see is that these lessons are specific to the topics of bullying and harassment. There's a wide library of lessons that are currently used to support our SOAR initiative. You say, own in, act responsible, be respectful. And those lessons are delivered throughout the year and certainly intentionally selected when certain odd behaviors are specifically reachable, we have a resource to pull from to reinforce those expectations. So, these lessons are proposed as an addition to that current library that really specifically addressed bullying and harassment. So, what the teacher groups did, that designed these lessons, they first started with a scope and sequence, with two strands being around really shifting from kindness to empathy to perspective-taking, because they felt that that rooted skill really was to help reinforce a lot, why are these topics important? What does it take to take the perspective of another person? And certainly, empathy is something that is very internal and personal to a person, and so, it's not directed towards values and beliefs. It's just the skill of being able to take the perspective of another person, who may have similarities and differences than you, try to resolve a conflict. So, there's one strand of lessons that starts with kindness and understanding what is the difference between mean behavior and bully behavior? As you can imagine, with a group of four to five-year-olds, when they are introduced to this world, everything is reported as bullying, right? And so, we really wanna start with helping them understand what's the difference between mean behavior versus bullying behavior, so that they and their online can identify, is this a problem? Well, great, do I have solutions that I can use? And when is this serious and I should really be talking to an adult? Obviously, it doesn't get rich talking to an adult anymore. It's just helping them build their vocabulary between differences between mean and bullying. And as the grades progress and maturity grows, we're then talking about what's the difference between bullying and harassment? So, the second strand of lessons deals with that problem-solving process. It does have connection points with their social-emotional learning curriculum as far as conflict resolution. Also, they're referencing tools that the kids are gonna be familiar with, with something called the SOAR solution wheel. So, that's for the kids to identify, you know, what are the different ways that we can resolve a problem, other than using our, you know, yes, mean words. So, I would say that these follow the scope and sequence that has been crafted for K-12. This is the bulk of the lessons that we were able to review as diversity and advocacy committee. The PDS specialists took the lead in kind of getting a framework started, and then they had opened the opportunity for any grade-level teachers to join them. So, there was at least three teachers in each group. The lessons then were shared with committee members, and there was opportunity for discussion. I think a lot of people were remembered or could recognize some of the reference points, or was some of the re-allows being very common in early L, and re-allows that maybe even happened in their own home. So, that was, that was familiar. And then, we did, we first established a criterion for consensus, so everyone contributed to that goal. We then took the average, and we were looking for at least seventy-six percent of the committee members to vote yes, for it to be forward to be as a form of education. In grades K through three, we had a unanimous yes call. In the fourth-grade materials, there were two members who elected to vote no, because they had not had an opportunity to review the lessons outside of the committee. So, representing these to you for your review, hoping to bring this to your next regular meeting, or your local vote. So, any questions you might have for me?
I just think they're fabulous, because I read through them. And the fact that you defined bullying versus just being mean, I think that is a huge thing. When that term came to be, it was so difficult to pinpoint, and I feel like this material really puts a finger on it, and is very understandable. And the stand-up, speak-up, team-up, I mean, you've always heard about standing up and speaking up, but the idea that of teaming up and helping that person or persons come up with a solution, I just think is fantastic. And so, kudos to everybody who helped put this together. I did have one question, it was more probably because I am naive, but do third graders know what tic-tac is?
Yes. I thought that actually was the one that I asked.
And yes, like I said, probably naive, because I thought, well, maybe kids would be like, I don't know what tic-tac is, but clearly...
They know.
If they don't know what it is, they've definitely heard the reference.
Okay.
Sometimes we'll see kids make videos, which they think they want to do too, but they're imitating, right?
Yes.
What they see around them, and so, they are aware of social media's presence much earlier than we.
Okay.
Some of the conversation we had, just to give you context, are there are lessons that lead into future years?
Mm-hmm.
And by doing this the first time in fourth grade, for example, there could be terminology that's covered in third grade that might also have to be covered in fourth, because they didn't have that third-grade lesson yet.
Okay.
So, you know, five years from now, they've started, and they've gone all the way through to the point. But for now, there could be some terminology that is discussed in fourth grade that normally won't have to be, because third grade covered it before.
Yeah.
So, they're kind of said that to have conversation.
One of our community discussion points was around this idea of encouraging upstandards, right? Is that upstanding is action-oriented, bystanders observing, and sort of letting things happen. And just acknowledging that not all students have the same personality. Not all students are gonna jump up and wanna put themselves in front of a bully. And so, wanting to give kids some different options of ways to help solve the problem that is, you can find a way that feels comfortable to you, right? So, if you're not comfortable standing at the midmoment, you still have the option to say something. And if you're not comfortable saying something, you still have the option to befriend someone who's being left out. And just acknowledging too, sometimes that there's such power in identifying that bullying behavior doesn't define that person for the rest of their life, right? And so, there's also opportunities to come along with the side, the side of the student who's done the bullying, right? To also make sure that you're feeling included, and, you know, and not to condone behavior, but also recognize that it was a fellow classmate. So, good discussion on that, and I think our kids will have great discussions around too.
So, there's a lot of content here, and I don't know how much you had a chance to look through it. I do wanna thank Mandy and their team, and the PBS, and the teachers, because that's a lot of work that they put into this. I know they put in a lot of this work every year when they do lesson plans, but I do wanna thank them. If you have questions, Jo is on the committee, so she can tell you about how to get questions you're going through. Again, we're gonna ask you to vote on this next Thursday at our regular board meeting. If there's something between now and then, please don't hesitate to return to Jo. I know Greg's been at several of the meetings. Mandy clearly can answer questions that you may have between now and then. But I'm not trying to diminish K through four, but it is a different conversation than as we get deeper into the grades.
I'll echo what Dawn said. Did really excellent work, just really good. And I read through it all, I read through it all carefully, and well-done, well-designed, very thoughtful, very careful. I know it's been a journey to get, but this is worth the journey, these sort of outcomes. And it speaks to the proactive, I mean, this is proactive work. This isn't just responding to the latest, you know, harassment or bullying or something. This is proactive, laying groundwork, so hopefully, so we avoid the reactive stuff. So, just excellent, excellent work.
Yeah, thank you very much. One thing I was thinking, like, yeah, these are fantastic stuff. A lot of, they only have like fifteen minutes to go over this stuff, and so much of this stuff could and should get reinforced at home. Do you envision trying to get, some of these videos, I watched some of the videos, it'd be great to send home. Do you leave it up to the individual teacher to kind of know their class and their style, to shoot it out on a Friday to the parents, or?
We've done a couple of different things. We had kind of the tip-ins to share the teachers that they can include in their newsletter. Obviously, if they're required, like if you wanna share this as an update. And then, for really key topics, you've asked principals to share the matters in their school newsletter, so they can join this month highlighting October's School Awareness Month, actually, as a good medium to add. So, trying a couple of different ways.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was at the meeting, and I think that was an excellent meeting, Mandy, and the joy, I want to thank you for continuing to serve and advocate, but I came away from that meeting very encouraged by it. I didn't even know that song, so thank you.
I also like the upstandard thing, in a world, like, it's so popular, so I have to do is to turn on the news or listen, it's so popular, just for people to, like, right? Like, it's the world we live in. And so, as a dad of a second grader and a fourth grader, it's like, what can we do to uplift people around us and to do that shining light, even when there's negativity around, and stuff? So, I thought it was great, and appreciate it, and I think that this is just another, just another representation of kind of what it is that we wanna be at Hudsonville, and that is, like, tends to be proactive, and arming our kids with tools that they can use for our life.
Yeah.
You know, one thought I had was, Dr. Van De Jack, I got you could sell this. I mean, I'm not saying we do that. I'm not saying, but it's just really good work, and I support that.
So, just looking at the future, we will be meeting again at the spring of the diversity and advocacy committee to look at the remainder of the lessons that have been shared, and that will go back to the following work session. And just knowing that this is, we see this as a starting place, because, yes, we hope that the lesson will be delivered, it's referenced, right? It's used in some way, but there's other things to say. So, as other materials were to be developed, we followed the same process, asked the first review, and then bring those to the upcoming months.
And with any lesson, after you do it the first time, there could be some tweaks, yes? A little heavy, or a little lighter.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks again. Well done.
I'm standing.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay.
This is really stand half up.
So, now, we're gonna run through a series of the recommendations. I'm gonna turn over for the next, I don't know how long to Mr. Greg do, a lot of time.
Thank you.
So, to help us all navigate these, these next couple items, the, um, this document, for members who've seen this before, is GMB's Design Playbook. We use this as part of the furniture development refinement process, and it serves us well. It's in your, it's in your packet. It starts out with this case with a, now, you can zoom in on this, and that's gonna help a lot to zoom in here, but this is Park Elementary as remodeled. Got the addition of the gym, got the central classrooms enlarged and improved, as well as media center here. And this part, we haven't, it wasn't, it's just starting, as Dr. Van De Jack took us through the tour, that's where we, but we're gonna do, if you can follow my cursor here, we're gonna do work in here this summer. This is the phase three, this northeast corner of the building. So, just to give you some orientation of what's going on in the building, also added in the central area here, nice breakout rooms, yeah, it's really, really nice for the school. Tonight is, in this design playbook, we're gonna spend, for purposes of simplicity, most time on this kindergarten slide, is that what I'd like to do is talk about what's different with this, at the culmination of this process, to the other elementaries. Well, the Park team did amazing work led by Principal Stefanic, Lee Arntz, he is not as passionate. I mean, furniture's tough, there's a lot of detail, but Lee's there to help us out with details, he's done it for decades. Megan from OAK, just a great team. And the teaching staff at Park, when we came back to meetings, because we had to really do a review of the process, they did their own research, they came back prepared, they really, really, really made this richer, more meaningful, gave us better outcome. So, what's different in the classrooms now? Because our goal was to really set a template for other elementaries, because we haven't purchased furniture, we really didn't purchase a lot of furniture, even when South, we expanded into what some would call South Three. We kind of copied what they had at, where Jamestown Lower is now. We didn't do a lot of intense design work there. So, this is really in the last decade, this is, this is kind of the deepest thing that we've done with elementary furniture. So, what's different? This table is five-sided Pentagon, and you see how it sets up here in the classroom in the rows? It gives us the ability to be really efficient in type here in the, in the class, as it's set up for traditional groupings of the entire class. And then, there can be all different kinds, because these tables have wheels on. It can be regrouped and put in a, instead of having, where you see four kids sitting in these groups here, you can do this, and you can have six kids around here real easy, you can put it in another configuration, have more kids. But spent incredible amount of time going to factory tours, looking at other schools to get, to come up with this table. So, this is a difference from what is in other elementaries. The teaching station. So, the teaching station, this is, if you recall what we did at the five-six building, we don't really have in the newer stout furniture layouts, we don't have the sitting desk, the standard, more maybe centuries-old process of having the teacher desk. This, this is what they wanna use, they wanna get up, they wanna be active, they wanna be moving. And this, because they told us, we don't want those tall ones like they have at the five-six building, because our kids are shorter. So, this is a, this is a shorter model, but it also helps teachers, it's a kind of a force organizer, if you can see on here, there's these bins, cubbies, I think the company that buys these is Gratmil. Anyways, they can organize their lessons right here, and have them ready for today, get them out, get them ready, and use them, and that's really efficient for them. They can move all of the classroom with these, and we're seeing at the five-six building, larger teachers, we didn't go through that many teachers, and not everybody uses it the same way. There's some teachers that use other features, like the student activity table more, but that is a change. Another thing we changed from the original design, because we needed more storage space, with new curriculums, curriculum items series, like Bridges Math, we're not gonna necessarily put Bridges Math here, but all along this teaching wall, we bought some shelving for them, right, to, right under here, right on this teaching wall. So, along this, and that was addition, we got some, a pretty good deal on the shelving, this is the shelving unit right here. Another interesting feature is we toured other schools, the movement needs for kids now, some would call it the ability to fidget, just movement period, is big, especially in the lower grades. And then, we found kids in the fourth and, third and fourth grades that it was important to. So, this stool goes right here under this activity table, under this activity table right here, and nice and low, this stool, non-graphic, you see here, there's a chair, but we're not buying chairs, we're buying this stool, this orange stool down here, won't be that color, it's just, it'll be different for us. But it's, it fits right underneath the table, so it gives them some storage space. Another desired thing was, they have a division when they're doing group work, so this ottoman, we've got two of these, that go right here at the back of this, I get in trouble, they call it reading rug, but they read on this rug, they call it.
Oh, okay, man.
But anyways, those are the big differences from traditional classrooms and things we've done before. And this is a wrap-up of seven months of meeting every two weeks, at least, with the big group. I could talk about this for longer than would really be productive. So, these are the big differences, the big changes from what we have in a traditional school, with our other elementary schools. Budget-wise, things are getting more expensive, we have some, you know, some international issues going on. And go to the last page, which should be in your packet ninety-seven. The total ask here is eight hundred ninety-two thousand for this, for the entire bond project of the current bond, we changed our methodology, we used to put all this out in bid packages and bid it. I remember when we actually did South, this room, you couldn't see out the windows. Everybody bought samples, they brought their books, and at the end of it, it was, we had at least three bidders that wanted to take me to court. I'm like, why, we're the district, we're going after you. But it was just, it was just really, really a challenge. And so, I don't think in that process, it was a little, a low bid really doesn't work that well in furniture space. So, we've done, and it's under the recommendation of both GMB, our architects, and our construction managers, OAK, is we've changed to buying off purchasing, municipal purchasing contracts. These contracts, higher ed uses it, cities, counties use it, for instance, AMIA. AMIA is a national contract, they take bids, every package they have has met the purchasing standards and laws for the state of Michigan. There's some contract, there's some purchasing contracts we can't use by, they just don't meet Michigan laws. But all these contracts, we use, so what we can do is we can go out through the guidance of the architect, and really pick the piece, item that fits our budget, and fits our quality standard, and really beats our need the best. So, we've done that for high school, we've done that for the five-six building, and the, you know, they drove me kicking and screaming about how we can't have just always bid this, traditional bid process, this works far better, and I think it's paying dividends to us. Plus, we get what we want, we don't have the arguments yet. We did throw two allowances in here for tariffs, and there's, with some commitments, soon we will be on lock-in pricing without having to deal with tariffs, we have to lock in, we have to lock in long before July one to get things for fall. And we also have a five percent contingency. So, total, our total recommendation here is eight hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred eighteen dollars.
So, Ben, is this just for the new rooms, or like the remodels?
Thank you, great question. We started that way, and then it just didn't make sense. So, we're doing everything in the building, and I'm glad, I should've said that, thank you. Yeah, we're doing the entire building.
And there's some good furniture in the building that could be moved to other locations in the interim, but furniture is another conversation long-term that we'll have to worry about.
And this is coming from which fund, bud?
It'll be the twenty-three, wrapping up the twenty.
And we'll have time to get it all?
There'll be, there'll be some items, I know there'll be back orders.
There's a hundred percent chance we might. Unless we can ask for them.
Yeah, I know, the nice thing about this school is we have a school full of furniture, so we don't need it, we don't need it to start school. The quicker we get the orders in, the better, and, but, yeah.
We'll have them soon.
So, is there anything the board can do to expedite where the ordering, or to?
Well, we, we're not gonna have an emergency meeting. If we have a meeting next week, and we're meeting in a month, then we might ask for the board to meet, but next week should be enough to get all this.
We, and Dr. Van De Jack and I have worked with these folks to give them, like, customer can have a strong indication that they're gonna get.
Yeah. If the board seems like we're not getting a whole lot of pushback with a lot of these items, and I, we put, let them know that, yeah, get ready, because on Friday morning, that's probably already ready.
Because insulation and this, does that include getting rid of the old stuff?
No.
So, how's that, who's, who's that? Because you gotta take everything out of what it looks like, so you gotta take everything out of that building. The maintenance team as well?
Um, there's, there's.
And your, and your.
Yeah, there's, there's another firm that Kenwood uses, that we're entertaining using for insulation, but, no, the furniture we have in there, we're gonna keep as much as we can, and just like we did at the first, at the start of the audiovisual process, the Epson projectors, we kept the good stuff and got rid of the stuff in other buildings that wasn't working, so.
Kind of load up that new storage building, it's just pointing up softball field.
You got an opportunity to use that.
That was Joe.
No, it's right.
We have any other questions or discussion notes? Okay, so you'll be bringing it to our next board, board meeting. Let's go on to the next one, fiber maintenance, did you recommend any?
Yes. Under the leadership of Mr. Smucker in the technology department, we have an E-rate consultant, and they, they conduct a bid process that's highly regulated by that E-rate program, it's a universal service fund. And Biased is our lowest-cost bidder, and that's our recommendation, they've done this work for us for a number of years, and our recommendation is to use them again. Fifty percent of the cost is funded by, through the E-rate program, it's a reimbursement program. The balance of the contract, if approved, will be charged to the school's general fund.
Did we do this last, last year?
We, this is a, it's a three-year, we do it every three years.
In the new, some of the new, for lack of a better term, technology, infrastructure, communication-type stuff, like, I know, like, a bunch of buildings got updated. like, I know like a bunch of buildings got updated, clocks and, you know, things like that. Is that, is this, is this covering that, or is that our warranty or something, or?
Our word that VICE does for us is to cover the building-to-building connections.
Mostly buried fiber throughout the district, so.
Mostly buried fiber.
So they're the infrastructure.
You're not talking closets, you're not talking classrooms, you're talking, once it leaves a building, it goes from one building to, it basically changes around. So if a little animal gets in there, which happens on a regular basis, repairing fibers, it's not like repairing an electrical, nine-ten power strip.
Yeah, particularly the fiber lines in indoor part of the district are particularly casey. That you're ready through.
Any other questions? High school technology?
Yes, this is the recommendation. We have just a need and a space for our, our golf fields to have indoor practice facility. It's, we, the former weight room, where the weights were when we were having structural issues in the high school, we had to move the weights out to other places, uh, next to, I don't know, another way to describe it, next to the former, Hawks Gym and.
Above the locker rooms of the old.
East of the pool, yeah.
The ones that if you were up there in your weight room, the building was starting to collapse in that area. That's why the weight room moved outdoors into the corner room, sure. Because the weight was starting to come down because of the weight. So the roof still exists as a storage.
We have, we have assurances from structural engineers that the structure is, there's integrity there. Just with the weights falling, it was cracking and flustered. If we'd kept going, we would've had trouble.
It is safe, I'm not, it's coming down.
So anyways, this, the recommendation is to prove, to approve a contract with Epic Turf of Holland. Uh, the bid, the bid summary is the second page here. And they are the lowest responsive bidder for the combined turf and sports equipment technology specification.
So is this pretty typical around now to have indoor golf simulators in the hole?
Most of the area, this was, this, we've talked about this for about four years, I think. It was part of the original Bond scope also. So it was, it was planned, it was one of those things, could we afford one, two, three, what does the space look like? We initially thought somebody else was gonna do it. And then when the bids came in, they were the lowest bid, so we did, I didn't, I was glad the department did the research, drove to the other side of the state to take a look at some of the big done, and we were impressed. It's a one product, so it's not like somebody's doing the turf, somebody's doing the simulator, somebody's doing the bays. It's one company and they're, we consider Holland local, so.
How many strokes per round are we?
Shaving at least one.
We're testing it out.
And this was from the twenty, was this from the?
It's, it's a, it's a bond, fun purchase, I mean, the twenties are almost done, so everything's been spent with the.
It's the same bond we voted, but it's two series, if you would call them, we sold the bond. So when Pat says twenty-three versus twenty, you're thinking, we didn't have a vote on twenty-three. It's the same bond we voted nineteen, that would purchase the bonds in twenty and in twenty-three. First series is about a hundred thousand, second is about forty million, hundred million, forty million. So the proceeds, you have to spend down the first series in a certain amount of time. Otherwise, you, frankly, have to put those back. So that's why some of these projects, when you're in the completion, to finalize and tighten up the budget to get the first series done. So some of it will be from twenty, twenty, others, the rest will be from twenty-three.
You might know this answer, but how, what are the numbers of the golf teams in high school?
There, we had, I think we had thirty-four girls last year. There's an A and a B, there's our student JV, right? So there's, I think there's thirty-four, boys are about the same, I think, one of them.
And the expansion of esports, just, I mean, it seems almost, but I could see it. Is there a chance that there is a esports golf, you know, there's a.
Like a Wii golf?
Tiger Woods.
Yeah. I know they have, I don't know what exactly they, what, what competitions they have with esports.
What a rhetorical question.
But I know that as you, as you walk around. Yeah, you could definitely have a phys ed class going up there for kids that may not have ever experienced golf. And to some degree, it's a lifelong sport, kind of lifelong sport, those kind of things. So having kids that have never swung a club or been out there, thinking, maybe I can learn how to do this. So at some point, when I'm in the business world and they ask me to go somewhere, you can be like, I've done this before. I think it's, you know, we talk about, we've talked about this in our focus groups now, I don't wanna deviate from this conversation. So, but about opportunities for kids, particularly at a building where it has a lot going on. We did a tour of people from Comsett Park the other day to the high school. And just when they hear the opportunities that our kids have, from esports to running the cafe at the high school, to the robotics area, which is now an educational space that can be a classroom also, to what they have. Obviously, the field house provides opportunities looking at, and we're gonna bring some other conversations at the next work session with the board about a second phase of digital communication, digital media, for students' access. Just opportunities for kids to find a niche, not that they're gonna do that professionally for the rest of their life, but that they feel like they have a place to, in a group, to deal with. See the same thing with Winter Guard and Winter Drumline and. Bass machine.
That social is the coolest thing.
I'm saying, we'll talk about that here. Sorry, Pat, gave you a little more chance to catch your breath on that.
So are we? So when these schools are coming to observe our facilities that we're doing to recruit other students, you know?
And they bring kids? Some will make a choice to, yeah, like.
Greg makes a good point, I mean, it's like, everything from the furniture, attracting parents and students, teachers, like, wow, I would love to teach in a room like this, right? Like, how could we, how do we, another topic, another day, but how do we promote, like, how do we promote that?
We do a lot of social media, pictures, communication, do a lot of this sort of, right? We have our art show going on at the high school right now, and every parent that has a little, or grandparent that has a little that's coming in that might have been in that facility, they're gonna walk in and just, and see what the activities that kids have.
Our teachers are great promoters of the district.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, I want your Chromebook, Bridges Math recommendation, Pat?
Yes, thank you. So now that we're a one-to-one district, we have a regular schedule. And this is the scheduled purchase for the fifth and, next year's fifth and ninth graders, along with the refresh of the specialist teachers' art museum. So those, those are Apple iPads, and we don't bid that, we sell source rate with Apple. And we use the, our tech department uses the REMC contract because the price in there beats the state, the state of Michigan's price. So it qualifies. We've not worked with C-HI before. And the recommendation is to purchase iPads and Chromebooks in a total amount of three hundred twenty-two thousand four hundred forty dollars.
You made that mark, yeah, um, you said we buy directly from Apple. Uh, but we are using a consortium, can you just make that up?
Yeah, so, so the, we're able to sole source if we can show compelling need, and we're essentially an Apple shop. An Apple, you can only buy Apple from them. Yeah, they give us a educational discount. But that's what it is, we've made the decision to be an Apple shop. So we have, because the student tablet is more of a commodity base, and we get it for less cost, we decided to go with Chromebooks when we entered the one-to-one phase of our education, our student technology.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, it says here, that's for the Chromebooks.
Yeah.
Got it, I got it.
Yeah, there are two different levels, the Chromebooks are for your older kids and the.
Thank you. And those iPads are just for the specialist teachers, the card design.
I feel like last year, having talked about this, but after four years, there's not a lot of replacement value of those Chromebooks. They're, they're pretty.
We more or less recycle them with, we do get some trade, some value. Our tech department does a really good job of that. Not just Chromebook products, but product to.
There is a wide range of students care for the Chromebooks. So there are some that are practically new after four years, and there are others that are not new after a couple of weeks.
How do you pull that ball, she was the one that got turned, she had the regular customers, went through lots of screens.
How about some with all, you mentioned tariffs before, like, are we locked in on this price, especially with the Apple stuff, or like?
We're not.
Okay.
We're not, keep, keep, put that little line in here. It's something favorable, at least it was last week.
Okay.
Pricing, but no, it's not a lot.
But again, we're going next week, so it's not.
Our liability is less.
Sooner the better.
Right.
Could be. Chromebooks could vary, right, and they, they could also come down, or they could be better quality if they approach that nearest one. The algae traditionally either gets cheaper or gets better.
Jeff explained the way, the, cause they had a bidder contract, so they could say, we just refuse to fulfill that price. We could go to the next bidder and do, go through the same thing, they could also say, we're not going to fulfill that, out of that contract. But it would be tricky to negotiate with somebody who's bid it and then deal with tariff, when you had that in the original bid. So we thought about it, but hopefully we just get there and they honor the price, because they didn't have to pass along, there's, they do have some inventory. So if we can get it out of their inventory.
Any other questions? Okay, let's go to the AED bid recommendations.
Thank you. So we have approximately, we use forty-four AEDs now. And that's, that's across all of our buildings, all of our facilities, all of our outdoor facilities. And we need a couple spares, and we need a couple just to have in new locations, because we're expanding. So the staff, the security staff went out and solicited these bids, there's range. But I think we have between GMB and Adventure, we do have a decent range there. I think we're close enough to say that we did a good job with procurement. This particular model, that everybody bid the same model, it's, it's network. So it gives us the ability, one of the biggest challenges people ever have with an AED is the batteries not charged. And so this gives us the ability to check that remotely, which is a big, a big advantage. Also, when our staff is training now, and staff is, our staff is training staff, and taking, as well as taking the training, it's, even though they're similar, which is not the same, and that's stressful at the time, it's nice to have what you train on. So this gives us the ability to have standard equipment across the district, and I think we have good, real good pricing here. So that's the recommendation, and this, if approved by the board, this would be funded by the district's enhanced village.
How many AEDs did you get, did you say forty-four?
We use forty-four right now, and we're asking for a fifty, we're gonna put a couple in spare, we need some spares, and.
We'd like to get the both nurses to care, we'd like to have another trainer and have one.
Yeah.
So we use Adventure to bid?
Yeah, well, yes and no, yes we do, but there's, there are probably four or five different versions of AEDs around the district. And we'd like to have them all be the same. So when emergencies show up, it's the same model anywhere in the district, it's the same. We, it's this, we've talked about this for a long time, this, you know, school buses, we can't afford to replace all seventy, eighty buses in one year, so we do a life cycle. These are things that we probably don't wanna do on a cycle, we might wanna do all, so that they're, they're kind. Pads, the wifi, all those things, so this company would then give us all the same, which is most of our current ones.
But not initially, we're still.
If we purchase all these, we get all of the ones out. And if we do this over the summer, then come next fall, you know, they all work right now. They don't have pads, batteries are charged, they're ready to go, but next fall, they'd all be exactly the same in the same.
What are our procedures, policies, is responsible for the issue that batteries are charged?
Currently, Eric Naterbell that receives all of them in the district, is in connection with EMT and fire.
So that function, we are, the function is, which function?
Security.
Security. The security team has it.
Yes. That's, that's correct, yes, we have backups within the security department also.
Side note, where, where is the AED in this building?
Right upstairs. Right by the restrooms upstairs, closest to my office. It's that closest to my office. Be in the office of the building.
We'll get you one nicer outfit.
Leave it hooked up to mine, yeah.
Any other questions about location of AED?
This is probably a complete overkill, but just like when you guys go on last, in a month, we were pulling on.
We, you're not used to phrase overkill when you're speculating.
I was about to do to say something stupid.
You're more sensitive to get over. Uh, let's, any other discussion? Let's go to the AED package recommendations.
Thank you. So this is a lot, I, we, we worked to winnow it down. But essentially, we went into this, we put this on the street for bid, for Allred, Forest Grove, Georgetown, Jamestown Upper, Jamestown Lower, and South to replace their, their projectors, their screens, and their classroom sound. We have various versions and vintages of classroom sound in our, in our elementaries. And so the, because of budgetary constraints, we approached this to go standard, non-network. Because of the low bid or this category gave us a really very, very favorable pricing, we, we felt we were able to upgrade to networked. The networked pendant, the teachers with elementary. Gives us an incredible amount of security flexibility. Just, it's a, it's just a nice feature, but allows a teacher to call for, and actually, they, they can lap the whole building down right from the pendant, one, one push. And they can also call the office from, from the pendant. So from a security standpoint, it gives us a huge, a huge upgrade. As anything that's networked, there's a little more work to do there, but we're really paying for, able to pay for that with the difference between, if you look at this, at the bid tab there, between the low bid and the second low bid, we paid for the upgrade, so we're. We paid for the upgrade, so we're, we're, we're excited about that. Also recommended, we did this as an alternate. We, because we didn't know if we'd have the, the budget available, we're asking for the board to approve and add alternate. To change out the projectors only in what would be the former freshman campus now called North Campus. And also in the base bid was um, a replacement of the building-wide PA system at South Elementary. As well as that building doesn't have the uh clocks, the new uh. There's a lot there. If anybody has any questions on anything, um, I, I can cover anything in more detail about that. Those are the highlights. There are three different uh contractors. Digital Age for uh one million eighty thousand, Moss Telecom for a hundred and fifty-three thousand. And Town and Country for a hundred and forty-four thousand.
So with making these changes to mostly south side of the district, does that pretty much put everybody at the same place? Or are there still some schools that are going to need some upgrades?
For the elementaries?
Yes.
Yes, this does put uh, there, there were, there were three schools that had, we already had the non-networked. Uh amplifier installed in and this is, this ad, the ad is in there to get that done too. So put all the elementaries um on that basis. The only building that has, we call Elementary H teams in it, that we're not doing right now with this is the five, six building.
We are still working to the box system to work through all the buildings.
Yeah.
But that's gonna be a little bit of a journey.
Yeah.
But this gets one more.
Yeah.
Or half of that will be on the list.
I just feel pretty good about the security upgrade this.
Yeah, because we don't want to get too many security conversations in an open meeting, but um, we spent a lot of time with the nurse talking about security. And staff's availability and what that looks like with our staff. Um, we feel really good about uh the system.
Any other questions? Okay, Ted, I wanna, I wanna thank both you and Dr. Vanderjack, those six items there. It is, when, when I see something come from you, and I think a lot of the board feels the same way. We know it's thorough, well thought out, and you're doing the best for the district. And so I just wanted to let you know that that's uh, it's very, makes us feel very confident about being in the.
And I would echo that about Mrs. Thomas's presentation also, um, knowing that you're gonna hear from me now about policy. So I wanna echo that, hopefully you feel the way about Mrs. Thomas, feel the way Mr. Briggs, and I think I'm up next. So the bar has been set free. And Mandy do it, and hopefully you cover it well, he's all bad. So I will uh, I will say, um, if we're ready to go over policy, I'd like to go one by one through every one of the. I think I can, I can speak, I, I'm just gonna do this. Uh, we are to the point now that we're reviewing two uh more sets of policies. I do wanna thank Dawn's leadership as on the policy committee. I wanna thank Joy and Nick for their time on the policy committee reviewing them. The three of them spent a lot of time, when I talk about every policy tonight, which I'm not going to, they did talk about every policy, just to give us some context. Um, we're going through the threes and the fives tonight, three thousands and five thousands. That will put us to the point where at our board meeting, everything that we discussed prior to me, right now, will come before the board as action items. So Mrs. Thomas's presentation will come to the board as an action item. The bid recommendations that Mr. Briggs just went through will come through as action items. Um, this, none of these will come through the board as action items at our next meeting. However, at our next meeting, we will ask the board to pass a resolution and have a hearing regarding policy uh fifty-two oh seven. Which is the anti-boling policy. So that, that will be a resolution just to say we're gonna hold a hearing. And then at the next work session, a month from now, is when we'll hold the hearing for the anti-boling. The board will then take that feedback, then we'll have the discussion in a work session, then everything comes to the board in June. Okay, so all the policies will come in June. So I'm saying that because we have two policies tonight that I wanna draw your attention to. Fifty-two oh seven is the one that we were having a hearing on, so we are not going to discuss anything about uh fifty-two oh seven. That will come before the board as a hearing before it's discussed at the work session. Does that, does that make sense how I laid that out? Okay, even if that's I think. I know, you can always stop me at any point. And then we have policy that I would like to, uh, there's, so anyway, going through all the policies, you could hopefully see where everything was highlighted. And what recommendations, what recommendations were made by the policy committee. We couldn't take the language out that the policy committee, committee is recommending, because the full board needs to see what they're recommending to add or delete. You'll see some that are highlighted in yellow. Those were things that were not part of recommendations that we added. One of them is, as an example, um, you look at the uh video surveillance. And buses was not on there, but we have cameras in our buses, so that was an add to our, um, of that policy going from there. Um, there's other language that's stricken, there's some that you can just see what's crossed off. If we did take a policy, for example, um, then the entire policy was crossed off, but it's still there for you to review to ask maybe, why did we not take that? Uh, there is one policy that we spent a lot of time discussing um as a subcommittee, and that was the policy fifty-four oh seven. Uh, fifty-four oh seven is the review of instructional materials. Um, let me, let me make sure I have this exactly right. Review as the um instructional program and curriculum development is under the fifty-four hundred, but specifically fifty-four oh seven. There are three components to this policy that I'd like to discuss real quick. Number one is parents' rights. That we, we can't, uh, we should not change legally. So that, what didn't have any highlights, we didn't wanna change that. The next one is something optional that we felt as a committee and pleased Dawn or Nick or Joy interrupt, that we felt that um. Should follow the procedure that is outlined in front of you. Uh, because that is instructional material and those are primarily board approved prior to them. So if you look at the end of that um section B, you'll see the super intense decision is final. Uh, that's about instructional material. Then there's section C, which is about library materials. And we've spent a lot of time having discussions about library materials over the past several years. And we created a whole procedure and poli, and uh procedures for how do we address um concerns regarding library materials. And that's regarding required reading, selective reading or optional reading, or access to libraries in the media center. So this is the grade that is recommended by Trune. And this is the information that you see highlighted under option C. If you look at the end of option C, if anybody appeals the decisions, they go all the way to the superintendent. It says the superintendent or designated decision is final. I looked at three other districts locally that we have viewed a lot, that we, we know, um, that use. And we spent time as a policy committee looking at what other districts have done. We have Jenison, Granville and Forest Hills that have all switched between the policies. All three of them have a different part C of this policy. Um, at uh Forest Hills, at Jenison's, uh, it is exactly like what we have in front of you. So Jenison's says the super, the superintendent or designated decision is final. At Forest Hills, it says the board curriculum committee decision is final. Um, and they have a board curriculum committee that oversees all of that at Forest Hills. At Granville, they have. Um, the appeal can be filed with the board through the superintendent. Um, the board shall review the case and advise a complaint in writing of its decision. It doesn't say the full board, it doesn't say, it could be a subcommittee, it could be the full board, it could be the board president. It's just as vague enough to say the board shall, so um, that is what Granville has done. So what I'd like to recommend tonight, before we go too deep into this, I would like to rework policy fifty-four oh seven. To prepare it for the board to review at our next work session. Again, we have time, because that's how we laid this out, not asking to approve anything. Um, and, and then we can have just a, maybe a quick discussion about who should have the final say in the meet, in the library. Materials, appeal process. There's, and you heard three different versions, um, one from Trune. Uh, our policy in the past has been it could go to the board. Is that the right policy that this board wants to enact, knowing full well that the next board or a board in the future could say, let's change it again? I, that's, that's what the board does. You set policy, you evaluate the superintendent and you hire the superintendent. Um, so what do you want the policy to look like? Um, it doesn't matter to me at all, not that it should, it's your policy. Uh, but I would like, if you can have a quick discussion, then let me know, because I would like to rework this so that we don't have to spend an hour on this policy. I can give you a cleaner policy to say, okay, we can all, or at least a majority can get around that policy. And when we vote on policies in June, there very well could be a recommendation to poll the policies that we can vote separately on it. So that we can see if we have a majority. I don't wanna just put a blanket over everything and say you love everything because that's what we do, so. If that makes sense.
Yes, it does. In fact, I had a conversation with Dr. Vanderjack, you had to say afternoon about this issue. When I first saw this um fifty-four oh seven, I was looking at it and I said, well, I said, um. Doesn't matter so much to me what fifty-four oh seven says, as long as we have ninety-one thirty. But, and then I, I talked to Nick, who had been at a meeting, and he said, no, ninety-one thirty isn't there anymore. Um, and I did not realize, and maybe I, maybe I'm the only one, I, until I was talking to Dr. Vanderjack today, that. Cause I, I said to him, I said, well, ninety-one thirty isn't there, how was, how was I to know ninety-one thirty was gonna be gone? And he told me, well, because everything is gone and we're only approving what's gonna be in there. And I apologize for the fact that I didn't pick up on that. And so I guess I might be the only one, but now all of us are in the same place. We know that, and he even quoted the uh.
I thought I had a good analogy.
He did, he did, he did.
You wanna share it?
Go ahead.
I said, it's like uh, if your church uses the, oh, the.
King James.
The King James version of the Bible, and they decide to switch to the international version. I said, you don't get to use both, you know, the new one. You still cover all the same material, it's just written differently. I know that was, I, I'm not saying that's an analogy uh for a, for a classroom, but it was an analogy when I was talking to Mr. Kansky. So I'll just say that, so.
But after you get, then I got done talking to him, I said to myself, well, ninety-one thirty is like revelation to me. And so I had to make sure that that's in the, in the book. So anyway, um, uh, let's, so, so there, there were three things that, that Dr. Vanderjack alluded to. Is to keep it as, as is with the final, a decision being with the superintendent. And then he, he, he spoke to me about maybe a quorum of the board being assigned to look over a, 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 appeal.
A quorum or a committee?
I would say a committee, because a quorum technically is considered the board. The only, the board can meet at any point when there is a quorum, so it kinda means the same thing. I would say a committee of the board, which would be less than a quorum.
Okay, and then the third option uh would be just to, uh, the whole board would be involved in that um, uh, review process again. I've had, the, the way I look at it, and I went back and reviewed um several things um that were going back and forth between the board. Uh, back uh two years ago, having to do with ninety-one thirty. And it's my um belief that um I would like to keep a form of ninety-one thirty in there. So that the board would have, the entire board would have the final say on anything that was appealed to the board.
You, you won't be able to do entire board with anything, because that is up to each board member whether or not they number one want to vote.
Okay.
One want to participate. But when you, when you establish the word board, that means at least a quorum of the board. It's helpful if everybody is there, um, but we can't control when somebody is sick or.
Right, right.
chooses not to vote or.
Right.
So I would say that you're either looking at a, a, not, no board, committee or, or board.
For the, right, board, okay. So that, that would be my.
Well, the policy committee looked at this, Dawn and Andrew and Joy?
No, Dawn and, uh, Joy and Nick.
Dawn and Joy, yeah.
Yes, yes.
So where the policy committee feel?
I think ultimately, I think we said we want everybody to have input on this.
Yeah.
Um, and I think we, we also talked about the fact that we worked so hard on the process that we finally have. For materials in our curriculum, that are library materials or classroom materials. And I feel that that work was a labor of commitment to the district, as well as the board's commitment to the community. To come up with a process. So there's part of me that says, if we did all that work and we've got all of that in place. Are we then saying we're not, we're not confident that the process we have from going from, you know, principal. To curriculum committee to superintendent is sufficient? And, and so um, having lived through the prior um book review process, as well as a lot of peer hearing. I don't know that it really is an advantage toward district to continue to have an, a wide open appeal to the full board. But as a committee, we said, this is an opportunity for everyone, you know, to have their say. Um, recognizing again that we've had this process in place now. And I don't know how many appeals we've had, um, as far as I goes, but.
I've had one other that didn't make it through.
Okay.
I, I agree with you. One, one, just a technicality, because I know we talked about this in our, so if anything, we have like different definitions for terms.
Okay.
When we say the board, I just wanna make sure like in that it's consistent with everything else we have in policy. There's some, some things we have to define, what?
The capital B board.
Yeah.
Would be a defined term if you're gonna use it that way instead of lowercase b.
Yeah. Yeah, and yeah, and I agree with you. I, I do agree too. I think the, uh, all the work that was put in a year and a half ago, or two years ago now. Um, I feel like is in a much better spot, so we shouldn't, this should be like a very rare uh event where we get all the way to the board. Uh, but yeah, I very much just known the sensitivity of the topic, wanting to have, give everybody the chance to, to chime in.
So we shouldn't take this as a recommendation to the policy committee, then? This is, this is, the recommendation is pretty to the full board.
I, I think we're okay with this, but we also did.
We thought it'd be good for the full board.
Yes.
Okay.
I think the.
Let me ask you a question, so um, this policy, right now we have, forgive me, but parent goes to affiliate principal.
There's a procedure that take, there's a guidelines that take place that fall outside of this.
Correct, so committee, the committee's formed, book review is done, right? The committee goes to the, says to the principal, I'm just gonna paraphrase here, but.
They go to the superintendent. So it goes principal first.
Yep.
Teacher first, then principal?
The way it is now.
The way it's now, yeah, it goes to the assistant superintendent.
Yep.
And then the committee is formed, and then the recommendation goes back to the superintendent informs them of the recommendation.
Right, and then the parent can appeal that decision and that's when the board decides.
That is correct.
Okay. Would it, and I don't see anything here about a committee being formed or anything else.
That's right, that's part of all.
No, we still have the book guidelines that the board has approved.
Okay.
The book guidelines still follow. But what I would do for our next work session is I would incorporate those, because I think a couple of board members have asked, can we incorporate some of that into the policy? Which I don't have a problem with, yes.
That's right.
Yeah.
Did you, Dawn, did you, I don't want you to understand, so I, I got the bring it to the full board.
Yes.
But were you also advocating that the, based on the, all the work, the great work that the team did prior? That the previous process should remain in place? Did I hear you correctly or?
You're talking about me personally?
Yeah.
I think the process that's in place is sufficient that if it gets to superintendent and the superintendent.
This new?
Denies, no.
The former?
Yes.
Or the?
On guidelines.
Yeah.
Yes, that if it gets to the superintendent, the superintendent says, this is our recommendation and this is the decision, that that should be final. It is my personal opinion. But again, I, I'd like to hear whatever else is to say. Cause I, I guess, I don't like the idea of the full board and, and maybe it's PTSD. But um, I think there would be a better way to deal with that, because I don't know that that benefited anybody in our community, honestly. Um, and I don't, I don't wanna circus just because we've allowed it in a policy. So is there a blend or a way to deal with that if people feel strongly there has to be an appeal?
I think it's wise, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm there as well. Now, if we have to look at compromise um in the way forward, then one option was a board committee. Not a quorum, but a committee um that could take a look at it and um provide feedback to the superintendent. But I'm also in a position. But I'm also in a position that I don't, I don't think the previous process was beneficial to the district. I don't think it's beneficial to the board. I think it's micromanagement by the board, quite frankly. And I'm, I'm leaning much more toward this policy, which...
I would support the full board review, if the board review it. I don't think it's micromanagement. I think it's following to on people that had elected you to represent their views. So I would support the board.
The full board.
The full board. And hopefully, we don't have that many, you don't have anything sense. So I guess it depends. I mean, I hear people say it's a circus, but I had nothing but a lot of positive feedback that came out to me. So I think maybe it was just depending on your vote, how things went, but I do think it should be the full board. That's just my opinion.
Again, I think, yeah, I so do at that time, but the path to getting to the board at this point, I think, is so much better than it was before. So it's kind of to your point. Put a lot of mechanisms in place that hopefully never gets to us, but...
It was the same process to get to the board last time, just, you know?
Well, no, I mean, there's, I know Mrs. Ball, who came and made the presentation about, hey, these are some of the things that we've done to more awareness to the parents. Some, I think some of them maybe wasn't an awareness thing, so I think...
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I'm listening to that. The actual appeal process from the principal, that was, that's been the same. You're talking about the work that's done to minimize the appeal to begin with.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, so that, like, that should, like, that is so much better than before, that it should be so rare that would ever get to this point.
And I, and I just to be clear, I've talked to a couple of you. I'm a hundred percent okay with the board getting to make this decision. You guys can call us no issue. I'm okay with that.
No, that's totally on you.
Well, no, I mean, it's, hey, this is, I'm okay with that.
Well, I mean, there is that point to be made. So two of the, two of the three other districts have chosen in some way, shape, or form to give the ultimate responsibility to some form of the school board. And I think one, their, one thought could be that, hey, this is our elected duty, this is a really important thing. I think part of it is, it is to protect the superintendent. And I'm looking at it as the superintendent, not you personally.
Correct.
You know, it could be anybody. And third, and you'll notice, and we've talked about this as a subcommittee, when it talks about the superintendent or designee, well, again, I know how you would handle, you would, you would own whatever decision, but some, the next superintendent could come along and they could designate really whoever, based upon our policy, and we may not want that as a board. We would want to have the one person, so that's why I said...
I think you raise some fair points there. Let's talk a little bit about, I think, what caused some frustration amongst some of the community and some parents. We formed this parent committee. We get a parent committee that comes back with a unanimous decision and on how to move forward. And then it comes to the board, and the board flips on that. So if I'm part of that parent subcommittee, I'm like, what the heck? I don't know, why do I want to be, why, just skip me, go right to the board? So, again, the policy committee, or Dr. Vandyjack, can simply kind of talk that through a little bit. Is the parent subcommittee, is the parent committee not needed? I think that that situation where you got a parent committee, you form it, and then the board flips it, it's like, that is a way, I just do it as always people's time, and really, not, and not a good thing to, for the board to do if we have parents that are asking to take that responsibility. So, so talk about it a little bit.
Yeah, I can, I can share that. That, the biggest issue traditionally with an appeal is an appeal of the process. So was the parent committee formed with two of the people that I'm in a book club with, or I work out with, or I go to church, you know, and so was it formed ethically? Did they follow the process ethically? Did somebody say, I filled this rumor gap, but I never read the book? That's a problem. If they follow the process, the way they're asked, and the way they're conversating, it takes, it's a thirty day, it takes time, right? Then I think the challenge is, when you do go on the other side of that, for what the committee, which is made up of parents, professionals, right, teachers, in their, in my opinion, they're experts in their field, right? And administration, and you have this discussion, and they're independent when they vote, and it's a seven oh or a nine oh vote, then I look at it and think, it is hard to overturn. And that causes a lot of people on the other side to say exactly what you're saying. I mean, there's a, there's still a large group of people out there that are like, you know, I'm afraid to do anything because it's going to be overturned, or whatever. So, and it's, it was a vocal group, and at some degrees, we're trying to minimize that. I think this board now is doing a, is really, we're doing a lot of good things right now. So I don't want to spend too much time on this, but, so I think that's where we are. I think it's really easy for the board to hear an appeal in which something happened that didn't follow what you would expect it to be following, when it gets to the board. If it does follow, and it's a, and it's a unanimous vote, that's a discussion the board can have as to the why, but, you know, when you have parents on that committee, and you have parents that will say a vote for you, what do you listen to? And I don't know the answer to that, because I didn't run for this position, right? So it's different, right? So, yeah. I don't know if that answers your question, Ken, but that's kind of where...
Not really, not exactly. But that's okay, we're just kind of, we're just kind of kicking around. Yeah, we're looking at you and Joy.
Yeah, I did address this, actually. I did write the board a letter, because I attended that, you know? And I just felt like, yes, it's a process, but who are the people that are part of the process? Like, if you go alphabetically from, like, like you told me in our subcommittee, if we're calling alphabetically those parents, A through whatever, are going from the bottom of the alphabet, well, as an H, I'm never called to be on the committee. If the parents could maybe have a better representation, just like on the DAC, there's like implied representation of people. It's not just everyone who thinks the same way, there's a broad variety. I just, I would, it was shocking to me that the vote was unanimous. And then there were, had I been on that committee, it would not have been unanimous.
Well, I can't speak to every parent, but it, when you, I can't tell you that every parent at the top of the alphabet or the bottom of the alphabet is conservative or...
No, I know, but, but maybe there's a better way...
That's about as random as you can get.
Maybe there's a better way to, I don't know. I don't know, I'm just, it just seems very, very odd. So I just question if the right people were part of the process and having to do that.
I think they, a hundred percent are. I can't control people's last name. I'm just telling you how we did it.
Before, I think, the randomness.
And I can tell you, we went through several to get to people because of, you know, a lot of people are like, no, I don't affect this, I don't affect this.
For that reason.
I don't, I don't want to get into the whole process for that, 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 that process, I think, is very robust, and I trust our administration that we do. The bottom line is this, if the board feels that this should go to the board as a final appeal opportunity, I mean, it's going to get there, but an opportunity, I want to write the policy draft at that point. So I'm here in bits and pieces, I don't, I'm going to ask to move on, because I think I have a sense of where we can get to a point in a good spot. And then I'll work on that and get it back to the board, and we can have additional discussion at the next work session. And we'll have time between now and then to have conversations, whether it be individual or sidebar, and we're ready from there. So, I got it.
I think that's, that's very well put. There's a couple of things. I think the board is at a, is at a very good place right now, as far as, you know, working together and stuff like that. But I also feel like, in this particular situation, that I would like to see a draft with the board.
You'll get a draft.
Excellent.
It'll be, it'll be a one-off, just, you know, you'll have, quite frankly, two five-thousand policies, fifty-two oh seven, forty-oh seven, that'll be off in the four thousands. If you'd like me to go through the rest of the three thousands and the five thousands, are there any other questions you'd like me, it's Dr. Uber, I guess, to answer? I don't think so. Do you, is there any other policies or questions you have regarding, and I know, keep in mind, it was a lot to review, and if you didn't get a chance to go through all of them, and you want to call me up tomorrow or next week, we can always revisit any one of these policies at our next work session. Again, we're not asking you to vote on these on the next, at the next board meeting, just to sign this for the resolution, so we can hold the hearing for fifty-two oh seven.
And one question on thirty-one oh five?
Thirty-one oh five?
It's not unclear what's written. We wrote by the optional, point number two, eight two. In the superintendent's or the principal's description, it is required to sign in, present identification.
Oh, we have, we have a lot of...
Yes.
Hold on. Hold on. Are you trying to look at the beginning?
Yeah. It was sort of like a double negative kind of scenario, where when you read through it, yeah.
Are we on A or on A? We're on, we're on two, A two.
A two. So we bring in the ten, it's our flexibility in the class or course, in which our students are.
Thirty, no, we're on thirty, we're on thirty-one oh five. Eight two. So let me give you a quick analogy. So we have a school store that's down, kind of down the way, and a parent comes in, and usually they sign in and they go from there. You might have, some of that comes in on a regular basis, that you already know who they are, they have some kind of identification, or we know them, then they might not be required to sign in. So it really, we try to, we try to go online, that that is our expectation at rebuilding, that they have to sign in. Are you going to talk about the word may?
Yeah. And I understand, and I understand the perspective that you're sharing. And, and I don't know what it cares more about students being, so please state it in my context. When you default to, you will sign in unless the superintendent or the principal provides direction otherwise. And then, and again, I know you've got this, so I'm just asking, to get this clear in my head. How does the principal or the superintendent communicate that special? You know, they can come in anytime, Pat can't, or, you know what I mean? How, how's it understand and communicate?
I think, I think right now, the expectation is everybody signs in. I was, were there with a couple of people from Comstock Farms, and they had signed in, they had ID badges. I took the tour, it was after school, with the tour for the, the class of nineteen seventy-six. They did not have to sign in, because it was after school, but there were still student activities at one, and they would need many higher times, like walking around the building. So I think the expectation is always that people sign in. I think our administrative assistants are on that more than the building principals, asking them to sign in, so. And I, I can't think of many that are not required to sign in, but we talked about this.
And the whole, was the whole escorting them on the property.
That was the part.
Right, because you, you basically are stopping at the word, a visitor may be required to sign in, blah, blah, and be escorted while on district property, leaving the fact that not every person is going to be escorted. So the word may in that sentence refers back to the fact they may be escorted, but not required to be escorted.
And they could move the word may to before escorted, and that would cover the same intent of what we talked about. Because we, people sign in, but when you go to the school store, you don't get escorted.
Right. You don't get escorted to the school store every day.
So the may really, it may apply, the may may apply to a number of these, but it's really meant to...
The escort department.
The escort department.
That's where we...
Oh.
That's what we...
I did not interpret that, no.
Right. So then we moved the word may, so that's where we're talking.
I know, like, yeah, every building I go into, I'm signing in, getting some type of a badge at every building.
But you're not necessarily escorted out, Johnny Drew, because...
But we wanted to leave that as a possibility.
Right, so someone's saying, well, how come I'm got to be escorted? We have the ability to do that.
I don't think we looked at the other schools to see if they moved may to in front of escorted.
Yeah.
We did. I know we did.
Okay.
I will look at it tomorrow again, but I know we did, because we, I think those were when we pulled up, and we're like, they're like, they required escort, I'm like, there's no way.
I know that.
And I mentioned to somebody I spoke to today, I was talking to a policy, I don't remember if it was Barb or Greg, I think I talked to you today, but the, there could be a policy that we ask you to approve in June, and in August, you're like, are we sure? I think Granville and Genesee both said, we had a couple that we went back and tweaked because it was like, not that you missed it, I mean, there's a lot of policies here, right?
I'll see them a little bit.
Yeah, or an event, or something takes place, you're like, that isn't exactly how we planned this workout, let's, let's clean it up. And that's the intent of some.
I had a similar note on thirty-one oh five about background checks. So do we require them now, or are we, continue to require them?
Yeah.
Later. Okay. Because this says the district may also require it on to the application, since the background check.
Yep.
Same thing.
Yep.
So it's tell people it's a privilege to be escorted, you never punish them.
Doug, my only other, I got, I have a couple other things that we can chat about later, but regarding intellectual property and our logo, is our logo, so you know where I'm going with this.
I think so.
So, we have, in our current policy, we have a policy that talks about using our logo. We also have an administrative guideline, thank you, that elaborates on that. The way that this policy is written is that we need to have prior permission by superintendent or designee or the board for approval of using intellectual property.